We'll go ahead and start off 2024. This is our city council regular meeting. It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, January the 2nd, 2024. Who scheduled this?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. And if we could, I'd like to invite Chaplain Terry Lubin up. And if you would, give us the invocation, please. Thank you for coming out in this weather tonight.
Heavenly gracious Father, Lord, you are the giver of all things. And, Lord, you give us our blessings, for which we are truly thankful. Thank you, Lord, for today's weather. Thank you for the rain. It is an answer to prayer. We thank you, Lord, for this assembly of men and women, who are in their positions to make decisions and to help lead and guide this city. Lord, we pray for your intervention. We pray for the Holy Spirit to hover over this room and to lead each member in their decisions, Lord, so that they might glorify you and be in the benefit of the citizens of this city. Lord, we pray for our men and women of the service, men and women of the law enforcement, our fire, and our emergency medical technicians, Lord. Keep them safe and keep them whole. Lord, we pray for the subjects on tonight's agenda. Lord, lead us and guide us as you would have us to go. Guard our words and our thoughts, the actions that we take, the things that we say and do, so that everything would glorify you. And it's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. If you'll join me for the pledge of allegiance and a pledge to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag of the United States of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Before we move to number four, proclamations and presentations, I will note that Pro Tem Vale and Councilman Rodriguez are not with us tonight, but we do have a quorum. Thank you, Bruce. Okay. Let's move to proclamations and presentations. And I believe we are just going to issue encouraging statements and encourage staff. Mr. Kaufman?
Well, I hope that everyone had a great holiday season and a happy new year. And our staff has been in and out based on holidays and things like that. And I'm just happy that I've been able to announce that our billing department in December was able to bill for the current timeline for the utilities. So we're finally caught up on billing. And they've had a lot of hard work, a lot of stress through the finance department to accomplish that. And now then, we're dealing with the citizens and the customer service folks are dealing with the understanding of the bills that were sent out over the last four or five months and how since October, they may have got a bill for July and August and then another one in September, for September. And so it's really hard to explain to everybody, but I'm proud of what we've been able to accomplish. Thank you for all the staff that's worked hard. And currently, where staff is going through that in the finance department, plus preparing the year-end audit and getting things ready for the auditors to be able to come in and do their work. They've been working with them closely. Also, in the middle of the cyber event, where I learned today that all of our employees now have a computer. And not all of them are able to access their specialty software yet, but they at least have their computer up and running. And we're making progress there. Still have a few things going on, but I can't thank the IT staff enough for all that y'all have done, working around the clock, crazy hours, and just like the finance team, working around the clock and crazy hours as well, to help us to be able to serve the public. So I'll stop it with that tonight. I'm sure there's some other folks that have some words to say. So, thank you.
Mr. Corgan? Mr. Wadley? No? No?
I can make something up.
No, don't have to make anything up. We have an outstanding staff. And the happiest day of the year is the first day that you're back and you recognize that all of the staff has come back. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you so much for coming back to enjoy Granbury and continue to make it better. Thank you. It's an honor to sit here with this group. Let's move on to the public comments. And public comments are on agenda items for the non-public hearing items. We have a couple of items on the consent that are non-public hearing and one on the deliberation. Do we have anyone who's signed up? We have no one who has signed up. We'll move to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or previously discussed items and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Anyone have an item they would like to move from the consent agenda? Okay? Anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion to approve the consent agenda is printed?
Motion is made.
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Wadley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. It passes.
Four and oh. You're getting better, right? Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Let's move to the deliberation agenda. And 7.1 is to consider approving request of Granbury Nissan Properties to, number one, authorize the city manager to execute a facilities improvement agreement for the Granbury Nissan Edition Lot 1, Block 1 project by and between the City of Granbury and Granbury Nissan Properties II, the LLC, which is the developer. And number two, final plat, a 7.46 acre tract of the Joshua Minute Survey abstract number 351 as Lot 1, Block 1 of Granbury Nissan Edition. The property itself is addressed as 4900 East Highway 377. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. This is the latter time of seeing this. You've seen this on your agenda before. And we had the developer request an extension. So tonight's the night to consider this item. I'll turn it over to Kara to walk us through the process. And she's been working with them closely to facilitate success tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Kaufman. This item is a plat. It was preliminary platted a couple of months ago. And now they're coming with their final plat and the FIA for a request for approval. They've added one variance to not improve Highway 377 to urban street standards. And the city engineer has written a memo to the file. And the DRC is in agreement with that to support that variance. When this went to Planning and Zoning Commission, they did recommend approval with four conditions. Since that time, the applicant has done additional work to the plat. And two of those original conditions are no longer needed. So staff is suggesting in our recommendation for approval to remove those two conditions. In addition to that, on the plat, we have added a condition that states, prior to the filing of the final plat with Hood County Office or initiation of construction, the applicant shall provide documentation of an easement for sewer line extension. It's my understanding that that is in motion and will be finalized shortly. However, we didn't have that, so we needed to add the condition. And then with the FIA, oops, let me go back to that. There's a process for plans submitted and approval by the State Department of Transportation. And associated with that to the FIA, we're adding a condition for the submitted plans that are in conformance with the Texas Department of Transportation permit requirements. And with that, again, we're recommending approval. And if you have any questions, sorry, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
If I could, Kara, could you state a suggested motion so they can kind of grasp their head around all these moving parts?
Sorry. I've got that on the slide.
Oh, great, great.
I just spoke through the slides. I apologize. Usually I don't do that.
That's great. Thank you.
Sure. So, let's see here. So those are your voting options for each item on your agenda for this item?
So the recommendation is to approve the FIA, approve the variance based upon your approval of the FIA, and then approve the final plat with conditions recommended by staff?
Correct.
That's our recommendation. So, thank you. We'll answer any questions y'all may have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So Kara, that, the utility easement, that's in addition to that 15-foot utility easement at the back of the property that's already there?
Right. So the easement that's conditioned, it would run along the front of the property, along the 377, to extend to the existing line?
Okay. What type of utility will that be?
That's a sewer line.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
No? Mr. Wadley? Yeah?
I heard something about approve the FIA one year. I don't see that. I mean, is that?
No, it's a two-year.
It's a two-year?
Yes, sir. Normal.
Okay.
It's a normal two-year time period. And the reason for that is that coincides exactly with the plat. So there's laws on the books that you have to, you have to give the developer two years to fulfill the duties and responsibilities of that plat. And that FIA is to ensure that that happens in that timeframe. Should they fail to do so, then we would need to take up the FIA and do the infrastructure with their money to complete the project.
Okay.
There are no other questions. Do I hear a motion to approve the FIA?
Make a motion to approve the FIA?
Let's do it.
I second that.
Okay. I hear a motion. I hear it second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The approval of the FIA is passed by a vote of four and oh. The variances in this FIA, do I hear a motion to approve the variance?
So moved.
Mr. Corgan?
Second.
Mr. Vandiver? I hear a motion. It's been seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. Variance is approved by a vote of four and oh. And do I hear a vote to, or hear a motion to approve the final plat with conditions as recommended by staff?
So moved.
Mr. Corgan makes the motion?
Second.
Mr. Vandiver makes the seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. The final plat is also approved by a vote of four and oh.
Thank you. All right. Move to 7.2. And this will be a public hearing. We will open the public hearing and invite the public to speak after we get through the staff conversations here. Consider adopting ordinance number 24-02 to approve the request of Nick Onowanowicz for a specific use permit for trailer sales use in heavy commercial zoning. The property is addressed as 4325 East Highway 377. Mr. Corgan? Mr.? Yes?
I'll turn it over to our planning director, Kara, while we handle this. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll pay attention to the slides. So this slide is our normal location slide. This site is outlined in teal. It fronts along 377 and is almost an acre in size. And the proposal for using this site is for trailer sales. A little bit of history on this site. It's been used prior for two businesses for similar uses, boats and trailers and so on types of sales. So it's existing with improvements. No additional improvements are proposed at this time. So in heavy commercial, which requires an SUP for trailer sales, this is the site plan. The 377 is to the upside or top side of the sheet in front of you. And there's a bit of a loop driveway leading towards the back of the property where there will be parking for the use. And then the trailer sales are towards the right of the site plan. That's where the trailers would be located. The zoning ordinance has certain requirements for criteria for making your decision. And these address the harmonious and compatible nature of the use. Along 377 and near to this site are uses that are similar with outdoor display and storage. There's ATV and outdoor equipment sales to the west side of 377. And also, there is a granite sales use with granite stored outdoors. Are the activities asked by the applicant associated with the request? Yes. Is the nature of the use reasonable? It appears to be so. And has any impact on the surrounding area been mitigated? It doesn't appear that there are impacts on the surrounding area. And the use appears that it would protect the public health and safety. And this slide shows the regulations for the use. And it appears that all of these regulations can be satisfied. The harmonious nature of the use can be satisfied. Are there recommendations for the improvements on the site? The site is already developed, as previously been mentioned. This is a new SUP for the site. So staff is recommending a one-year term, which has been our practice for SUPs. And the remainder of the regulations are standard compliance with codes and other types of ordinance requirements. And we did send notice to the 13 property owners within 200 feet and also published in the newspaper. We did receive one letter in favor of the proposal, and we did not receive anything in opposition. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with four conditions. These are the same as recommended by staff, a one-year term, compliance with the site plan, and then our inspection and code standard requirements. And staff recommendation is for approval with for the trailer sales business and the same conditions. These are your voting options to approve, subject to conditions as presented, approve with modified conditions, or to deny the request. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thanks.
Questions? Ms. Wadley? I'm gonna go ahead and open the public meeting. I know that Mr.? Nick, I'm gonna mess this up again. Onowanowicz? Nick? Thank you. Mr. Onowanowicz, Nick is here. If anyone should have any questions of him. Does anyone else have any comments? Public comments? Okay. I see none, so we will go ahead and close the public meeting. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was waiting for you to close the public meeting.
Okay.
Do I have a motion on this? I have a question.
Okay.
Kara, can you explain what legal nonconforming portable office space means?
Sure. That's a portable office is a building that can be moved. And it's a building that's on the site right now. And without proper history of permits or zoning, it's considered to be there legally, legal nonconforming, right? Is the term? That pretty much sums it up. They're going to make use of that building. They can do that. It's allowed.
But that wouldn't be allowed to be built today, right?
Right.
But since it's there, it's like grandfathered in, basically, or whatever?
Right. Grandfathered down would be true.
I have no problem with it. I'm just curious how that works. Like, at some point, do you have to go do something different? Like, do something, a permanent structure? Or is that strictly up to the owner of the property?
So if it goes for use for a certain period of time, if it's unused for a certain period of time or other situation causes it to, let's say it becomes dilapidated, no longer can be habitated, then we would look at that for how much time has elapsed since its last use? How, what's the condition of the building? Has it been destroyed by fire? Couldn't use it then?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Here are no other questions? Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number 24-02 to approve the request of Nick Onowanowicz for a specific use permit for the trailer sales use in heavy commercial zoning? Property is addressed as 4325 East Highway 377. Mr. Wadley?
So moved, subject to the conditions as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Corgan seconds. No other comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It is approved four and oh. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. We'll move to 7.3, which is also a public hearing. Consider adopting ordinance number 24-03 approving a request of the City of Granbury to amend select sections of the City of Granbury zoning ordinance amendments are proposed to Article 4, permitted uses. The general purpose of the amendments are to ease the use limitations for certain uses. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, as you know, we've engaged the services of Mr. Craig Farmer to help us review our zoning ordinance and come up with recommendations to make our processes more user-friendly for the citizens. And so we've got some recommendations tonight that have been vetted through the Planning and Zoning Commission and have been recommended to the council for approval. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Farmer to explain and walk us through what he's proposing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Mayor and council members, this item was seen by your Planning and Zoning Commission at their December meeting. The article we're talking about is the general provisions, use of land and buildings. By the way, we're amending that title to say land and buildings. Right now, it only says buildings. But, and then 41A is your actual use charts. We're amending two line items in there. This process was started back in, as your staff comments say, back in 2022 of adding some supplemental regulations for these very short-term rentals and better definitions. This is the follow-up to that. Basically, the bed and breakfast hosted. We've changed those from requiring a specific use permit to permitted. And then the short-term rental residential unhoseded is the same process. Those have been changed from requiring an SUP to being permitted. We did not change anything on the short-term rental commercial. They're already permitted in your commercial districts. But if you'll notice over there under supplemental standards, that column, we get into the additional issues. In your package, you have the actual changes to Section 4.2 Supplemental Standards for Land Uses. We reorganized some of them, reworded some of them, took out references to specific use permits and those sorts of things. The one change that came up at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and is mentioned in all three categories, refers to the definition of a bedroom. There's been some confusion about the definition of bedrooms. The Planning and Zoning Commission looked at this, and they recommended that it be amended. We had originally talked about 50 square feet plus a certain square footage for each additional person. They recommended making it as per the International Building Code. So basically, it's at least 50 square feet. I mean, excuse me, it's at least 70 square feet for a bedroom and at least 50 square feet per occupant. So if you have two occupants, you have to have 100 square feet. If that makes sense. And it just says as per the building codes. So that's streamlined that. You'll notice on the item number 17, bed and breakfast hosted, you've got some of the same wording changes. And then the same thing on the last category, which is 18 short-term rental residential unhoseded. Has some of that same language to clarify that. The, I think that covers the significant changes. There's a lot of tweaking in there to make it read better. So basically, the short-term rentals are permitted use, but you've got supplemental standards that they have to abide by. And you've enhanced those since 2022. And we added to that some more here. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Let me just add some more color to your conversation. In other words, if you read the supplemental standards and analyze all that's written here, if you have a property that's located in the commercial or the historic district or the historic overlay, you'll be able to apply for a permit for a unhoseded B&amp;B. And it will go through an administrative process as long as it follows all these guidelines that are laid out in our code, just like you see when you've been historically seeing the applications come before you. They'll now just be approved administratively. Should we have problems or failures to meet those requirements, then we'll have the authority to go back and revoke that permit and cause those people to come into compliance or remove their certificate of occupancy for that use. So it frees up the process to where you're not going to be seeing SUPs on B&amp;Bs, unhoseded B&amp;Bs anymore. And also, it won't be affected with the, where it's already permitted in the commercial business district in those areas that are already listed. So does that make it easier to understand? So all we're really doing is changing that definition and then making it where it can be approved administratively by staff. And I mean staff, that means the building inspection department and the planning department working together to approve and make sure that these applications are complete. There's still a fee, just like is already in place, that they've got to file for every year, a business license to have it there, which could trigger another inspection. Or if there's a complaint that the standards aren't being met, we can do an inspection as well. So that's kind of where we're at. Hopefully, it'll streamline some more processes. This is baby steps we've been taking to make this more efficient, this whole department, to make it more efficient. And you know, we've spent a lot of time and a lot of effort sending out notices to all the property owners within 200 feet. No longer will we have to do that. Any more questions? We'll be happy to answer them.
So, but this is still limited to the historic overlay district?
Yes.
Yes.
Historic district and the overlay. So basically, what we've done is we didn't change the zoning that was adopted in 2022. We're just making it where it doesn't go through the whole bureaucratic process of public noticing, the notice in the paper, the notice to all the residents within 200 feet, then comes before y'all for a public hearing. And you're going to approve it because it meets all the requirements. You have to approve it. It meets all the requirements. So we've just taken that layer bureaucracy out of it.
Mr. Wadley?
And the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend it unanimously, if I recall correctly, subject to their changes.
So it won't come to council anymore? I know we have to approve them by law anyway. I get that. I didn't realize the comments won't go out, or the notifications won't go out to the public anymore. go out to the public anymore. I don't know that I really like that, but I guess that doesn't matter either, because, again, we're required by law to approve them. You know, so I don't, it just seems kind of weird, but okay. I guess the question I had is this 50 square feet per occupant. 70 square feet's a small room, seven by 10. But if you had a little bunk room with four bunk beds in it, like stacked up, maybe you have to be a 200-square-foot room, right?
That starts getting to be fairly decent.
So, that pretty much means you, because bedrooms aren't usually 200. A master bedroom would be that big, but the standard bedroom wouldn't be that big. So, that, it precludes anyone from doing that. Is there a reason for that?
For the building code?
The building code says 50 square feet per occupant in a bedroom?
The international code.
Yes, international code does.
Okay. All right.
Just coordinating it back with the international code.
So, what, what you don't want to happen is, as y'all said in the past, when it's coming before you, okay, this house has three bedrooms. How many beds are you gonna put in there? Well, our code is already in place, but we've, we're refining it to where it meets the international building code that you adopt for us to live by. And the state requires us to adopt that code, might add, so.
I like it.
And based on that, based on the software we have, we basically have a way of monitoring how many, well, we can monitor the revenue from the beds, which could be inferred. You have two people, four people, six people, whatever.
You'll have a certificate of occupancy. They, they make application to building inspection. And there's a, there's a, they actually have to turn in a plan showing the bedrooms and exiting and all that sort of thing to scale. And then as part of that process, then they'll be assigned a maximum number of occupants. Again, the, the residential unhosted is a maximum of three bedrooms, and the, I believe the commercial one's a maximum of seven bedrooms. So, so if you had a four-bedroom house, they'd still only get a certificate of occupancy for three bedrooms. So.
Okay. Okay. No other questions here? I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone else want to step forward, be heard at the public hearing? I see no one. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Other comments, questions? No? Okay. All right. Kara, where is the request on this one? Do I hear a motion to approve the zoning ordinance amendment as recommended?
Motion to approve the zoning ordinance amendment as recommended.
Motion made by Mr. Oberdear. I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Wadley makes a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. 7.3 will pass four and oh. Thank you. Okay, 7.4 is also, thank you, Mr. Foreman, appreciate it. 7.4 is also a public hearing. We will have to consider a property tax abatement agreement for the Commerce Center of Granbury speculative building project and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute the agreement with the consent of the TERS Board of Directors. So, we will have ordinance 2337 tax, adopt a general tax abatement policy, and ordinance 2386 TERS creation of the investment zone. Those are reference materials. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I believe, I'm conferring with councilperson, council member Wadley, and it looks like he's got a motion written that goes along with what I'm gonna talk about. Thank you for doing that. This agreement isn't ripe for us to vote on it yet, and you may remember about six weeks ago, we had to vote to establish this night and advertise this night in the newspaper with 30 days' notice for the public hearing to be had on this topic of discussion. So, we're not ready to do that yet, so I will defer my conversation to Councilmember Wadley.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Wadley?
I'd like to move to postpone definitely this item 7.4, and that the tax abatement agreement and the public hearing be held on February 6, 2024.
Second.
Mr. Oberdear seconds that. No discussion? Do I need to open a public hearing? No. Okay. We are postponing definitely, and we have a date of February, what was the date again? 6th. 6th. Okay. I have a motion. Have a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays, so we will postpone that definitely by four and oh. Okay. Number eight is the, we're gonna recess the regular city council, and we're gonna convene into a meeting of the tax increment investment zone, the TERS Board of Directors. And on that agenda, if you have that in front of you, we will have public comments on agenda items for the non-public hearing items, and that is, the only one we have there is to consider adopting the resolution number 2024-01 authorizing the city council to enter into a tax abatement agreement for Commerce Center of Granbury speculative building. And then there's the references, Chapter 31, 1.025, TERS tax abatement agreement. Do we have anyone who has signed up to speak? No? We have no one who's signed up to speak. So, we will move to the agenda. Consider adopting resolution number 2024-01 authorizing the city council to enter into a tax abatement agreement for Commerce Center of Granbury speculative building. Mr. Wadley?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we postpone definitely this item to consider, item 3.1, to consider the adoption of resolution number 2024-01 to February 6, 2024.
Okay. Second. Mr. Wadley makes a motion to postpone definitely until February 6. Mr. Corrigan has seconded that. So, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That will pass four and oh. We will postpone to February 6 to cover that. Okay. Number eight. We will move to nine. We have other comments on matters not on the agenda. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes for a combined total of 30 minutes allotted at this time for comments regarding matters not listed on the agenda. And the city council will be allowed to receive input or information for future agenda items, but will not be allowed to enter into discussion at this time. Do we have anyone who's signed up? We have no one who's signed up. Then, I am going to declare that the city council is convened into open session, and that four members, a quorum, are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section 5501 dot oh seven one consultation with attorney, pending or contemplated litigation. Section 551.072 deliberation regarding real property. Section 551.087 deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, project poker face, and project hammer time. We are now into executive session. We're gonna reconvene. I now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session, and the four council members, a quorum, are present. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Wadley?
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the city manager to execute a development agreement with Granbury Ace LLC for the implementation of a pump and haul system.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Wadley, seconded by Mr. Oberdear. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It's approved four and oh. Any other business? If there be no other business, I call the meeting closed and adjourned.